Good afternoon. You can stand for the invocation, please. We thank you for the many blessings you have freely given to each of us. We ask for your presence to guide this meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees, provide them with the knowledge, compassion, and wise counsel needed as they discuss the business matters on the agenda today. Help us all to remember that we are stewards acting on behalf of our customers and provide us with the grace to serve all people well. We ask this in your name. Amen. For the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And for the safety message, because we are continuing to meet in the new building, we wanted to review the evacuation procedures so we are prepared to be safe in the event of an emergency. You hear the fire alarm? Follow the instructions in the announcement delivered through the public address system. If asked to evacuate, use the glass door exiting out of the boardroom to the outside. If that door is blocked, use the door at the rear of the room. Verbally alert others in the room of the fire and evacuate. Move to the main parking lot in front of the headquarters or the AT&amp;T parking lot over the McCulloch Brooklyn Bridges, whichever route is safer, and await further instructions. In the event of a situation like this, our security team will be monitoring the situation and will notify the appropriate emergency services and other team members. We will also have employees nearby who are trained to administer first aid if needed. Safety is a top priority at CPS Energy, and while we hope this information is never needed, we want to be sure we are always ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Polo, how long you've, I know you've been up here many times, spoke to us. How long you been with the company?
I've been with the company for almost 15 years. It's easy, I tracked that after my son's age, so he was one when I started, so I always think of his birthday and know my service time.
You did a wonderful job. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Loretta for we can do public comments, conduct public comments.
Thank you, Chair Dr. Mackey. The next agenda item is public comment, which provides an opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on any of this meeting's posted agenda items. Here's how the process will work. We'll invite pre-registered speakers to speak in the order in which they registered, with in-person commenters speaking first, followed by virtual commenters. They may only address the board on CPS Energy-related business listed on the posted agenda for the meeting. Speakers should state their first and last name, what organization or group they represent, if applicable, and indicate the agenda item number they're going to speak about. For this meeting, we have one registered speaker who will speak in person. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak. Our first and only speaker today is Mr. Russell Seal.
Chair Dr. Mackey, I would like to note that the mayor is here and now all trustees are present.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ramirez. Welcome, Mayor.
Okay, take a mask off.
Yes.
Thank you, Board. Thank you, Ms. Cole Williams. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing us to speak. Found out about this yesterday morning, a very important topic, y'all are discussing, a very long overdue topic. So first of all, thank you for having this topic, this conversation. It's something we, as a community, really need to dive deep into and look at very carefully and consider a lot of parameters that I did not, I might flip, quick flip through these slides. Like, why is our energy use per house, 200 kilowatt-hours per home per month, greater than Austin Energy's? Is it our demographics? Is it the age of our buildings? What do we need to do to get it the same? We have to study that, dig into that. Home management for emergency preparedness, we have to have everybody participating in programs like the very good Nest thermostat, understanding that you're using the thermal load of the house to precool the house in there. Thank you for doing that. Let people know about it, or maybe not, so that my wife doesn't know I turn it up to 81 degrees at 4:00 and doesn't let it come down again until 9:00. The house retains its coolness. So many of these things we have to be digging into, using studies and science to figure it out together as a community, being open and transparent and having deep conversations. In your slides that you have, I flipped through, you have the population increase slide, but you didn't have the projected energy use. Maybe I missed it. Going out, how does that, you know, it's not just the peak, it's the overall power use. To get our greenhouse gases down, we need to be worrying about our overall energy consumption, not just about the last few minutes, the high points of the day. So many stuff to talk about, not enough time to do it. Hopefully, we'll be able to really dig into this and welcome to the community, welcome to our neighborhood. I've been here in the neighborhood for 21 years, and my wife's law office down the street, beautiful building, and hopefully, we're going to get together and have a community where we can meet each other and shake hands again someday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seal. At this time, next, we have our CEO's remarks.
Thank you very much. I think I might have given out all my reports. Here it is. Okay. So it's, today's a very short report, but an important one. Well before we had the primary goal of focus on Storm Yuri, we have been on a journey to decarbonize. And that journey has been one that we've been involved with for decades. We've been in wind for over 20 years, we're number one in solar in Texas. We have a huge Warren Whitting Energy Efficiency and Conservation Program. And what we know is that all components of our programs matter. It is not a matter of picking one solution, you got to do it all, and you got to keep working on how to improve the programs. Before Yuri, again, we were talking about the Flex Path Resource Plan. That was monumental, it was the first time we released that information, to help us have a deeper and better dialogue about the challenges and the opportunities that we have. And of course, I think, living through all of the things in this evolution and then experiencing what happened with Yuri made us also understand that getting it right and getting it and keeping it in balance and putting it across the pillars in a responsible way has even more meaning. Because we do have to find a way to decarbonize, but we have to find a way to do it responsibly and keep everything in balance, everything from reliability, resilience, and affordability, to keeping the grid secure, to keeping everyone safe, and to making sure that we're managing the environmental responsibilities around that. So today's meeting, we put it under the risk presentation. We, we have a couple of these every year. Of course, the Risk Committee for the Board is the entire board. And what we're, what we want to do is put some thoughts out here and discuss with you some of the nuances, kind of put them together in a, in a package, and then get some of your impressions along the way. We are constantly taking your input, we're taking the input of the public, we're taking the input of all the stakeholders, we now have the RAC, that we can get additional insights. They're going to help us delve into some of the details and look again at the checks and balances. But we thought that if this would be a good time to look at some of the major thoughts. I, I do want to say, before we get into that in, in the agenda, we will have, the one ask that we have of the board today is to take our new Chief Legal and Ethics Officer in GC and have the board authorize her to also become the Board Secretary. So that's the one action item that we have. The rest is for discussion and input, and I'm just going to give a couple of general highlights. In Item Six, we're going to talk about supply and demand. We're going to talk about the increasing demand that we have from customers, and we are very interested in how customers can be more efficient. That said, San Antonio and Texas is a growth market. So demand, whether it's by individual home or business, is important, but also collectively. San Antonio, we have a great problem. We have a growth, a growth opportunity, and we can continue to expand. We see nothing but upside in terms of the development of new businesses, home subdivisions, all of those things are in the positive, and they factor in the way that we look at demand. Before Yuri, we were, I think, the community wide was anticipating about a million people growing in Texas over the next 20 or so years. I think we feel like Yuri wasn't, had some impact, but not in a long term, in terms of growth. We still anticipate growth is going to continue to happen here. That said, we're going to look at our supply position of energy. And we're, we are what we call long in generation, we have, we have more generation than this community needs, and then we take our excess and sell it back to help stabilize Texas. That said, a lot of our generation is aging. We have over 3,000 megawatts of generation that will be up for consideration of retirement by 2030. That, we, we do not, management does not make the decision to close any plants on its own, we bring each one of those to you. Some, though, will be because they're old, they're 55 years or older. Others, relative to what do we, what we can do with units like the Spruce units, can we convert them? Can we change them to a lower emitting technology and can we get them to help us through this transition? But that said, this decade is a decade when quite a few decisions will need to be made by this, by this board. We again believe that the Flex Power Bundles that we've devised, because they're balanced, they look at the ability to add more renewable energy, but also balance them with firming capacity is the best way to do it. We need power that is still in, in a package, reliable and resilient. And so, we're making a lot of progress on this current bundle that we're doing. Now that we've seen the potential impacts of the winter, we understand that we're going to have to design resource bundles that are able to better handle that. The plan that, the proposal we have now is targeted at summer peaking units, because the next oldest set of units are, they perform strongest in the, in the summer. But we will ultimately have to look at summer peaking units. And so we will continue to update the resource plan every year with the input from the board and the community on how we can solve those problems. When we will do that, by again, looking at our value pillars. I just, a couple of highlights of things that you know, but just so we can get this into the record. The summer peak, it typically happens anywhere from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and then as the summer drives, you know, draws on, and we have, you know, more intense weather, it gets more difficult, because really, it just stays hot all the time from one day to the next. But the winter peak is different. The winter peak goes into the evening hours and the early morning hours, and we're typically seeing the most demand for energy as people are waking up in the morning, trying to get started with their day, but they've come off a really cold night. So the demand really happens as people are getting ready for the day. So those are two different situations. We had not in the past had to plan for a winter peak, but now, of course, we do. We still have to, though, think about it in terms of the goals for decarbonization, how they relate to how do we fulfill the needs of matching the desires of the community associated with the cap. We are leveraging and partnering with other entities to make sure that we can do that as responsible as possible. In reality, CPS Energy can't solve all these energy issues on its own, it's going, it's an industry objective. Every single community across the globe is trying to figure out the best and most responsible way to do that. One of the entities that we've had a long-term partnership with and that has a global view on this is EPRI, and the Electric Power Resource Institute, and they have a Low Carbon Resource Initiative, where they're looking at ways where we can all contribute into projects, find ways to leverage the money across the industry, and look for steps that are real and applied as we go through this. And so there are many entities that are involved in that. We joined, I think, early this year, but we expect a lot of help in terms of looking at solutions, because again, I think our primary responsibility is still to serve every single day 24/7/365. We need to partner, the power partnership, to look for these solutions in the right way, making sure that we can keep the lights on year after year. That, that is what we'll see in Item Six. In Item Seven, we will show a comparison of solar to gas, not to villainize either technology, but to offset and show again, we couldn't run this utility just on gas, we would have had supply issues during Yuri, it doesn't do everything. It is less emitting, but it also has emissions issues plainly, it's half, but it's half. And so we have to look at that. And solar has a huge benefit of not having emissions, but it's intermittent. And so, we think those extremes tend to kind of characterize the preferences that people have, whether it's fossil or solar. We believe, again, we need to always look at each one for the value that it brings and be able to mitigate the challenges that occur. So that's the primary focus of today, of which case, again, we're, we're going to pause for questions along the way. You'll have primary presenters from Fred Bonnywell and Frank Almerez's group, and, but I also want to highlight a couple of additional challenges that you'll be hearing more from us on as we go forward in the future. One of the biggest things, so infrastructure is always challenging, again, trying to figure out how do we upgrade the grid or change production in terms of generation. But I want to say that it's not just the infrastructure resources that are a challenge for us, people is a challenge. In this market where growth is happening, we are seeing more and more pressure in terms of recruiting and retention of people, all the way down to the front line of our wage scale workers. And we are seeing a tightness in the market, we're seeing premiums being paid, we're seeing a lot of challenges from that standpoint. And one of the most important things is to make sure that we're developing strategies that help us continue to effectively recruit and retain talent. We will take this to the Personnel Committee, but we will also take it to the other committees so we can look at it from a, from a benefit standpoint, from a financial standpoint. But those are the things that I think every, every employer is dealing with. I did want to highlight that, you know, before we, we saw Yuri under Paul Barham's leadership, we had been looking at grid modernization. And the board actually approved a procurement back in February of 2021, where we had selected Burns and McDonald to help us look at a new, a new project, it'd be about a four-year project, where we look at new technology and improving controls around systems. One of them in particular is called reclosures. From that perspective, we can sectionalize the grid, isolate parts of the grid, and then have more opportunity to really keep certain aspects of a circuit on, but be able to have a bigger group of customers to have better outage management. So the durations won't be as long, and ultimately, we're using technology to improve the way that we can optimize the grid. It is also part of our smart grid efforts. It helps us as we add more distributed resource, resources on the grid, more solar, those are things that give us more control, and it helps us with the voltage management. It will help us overall with reliability and resilience. It was reported today, I mean, yesterday in the news, but you all had previously approved it. It's an important project. I have a copy of the article behind my, my report today for, for any of you that have any questions. And you'll hear more from the team on this as we go along. You will also hear, I mean, we'll talk about it a bit, we're going to share some of this at the Thursday meeting with the council, we'll be there for the Committee of Emergency Preparedness, they are having, they will have their report, in which case, we're there to listen to their findings and to answer any additional questions they may have. We'll talk also about the things that we're currently doing versus some of the things that are on the horizon. The weatherization objectives, for example, we think there's going to be more guidance at the, at the state level on that, and as we get it, we will tell them what it looks like today and what we think it will look like in the future. We continue to look at the critical circuit list. That is, that list was very big during the storm, and the requests for outages were very big, and so from that standpoint, that list being as, as broad as it is, it restricted our ability to be flexible. We are streamlining and revalidating every, every business on the critical circuit list and really, which circuits are defined as critical. We actually think that we will streamline, we think we'll, we are finding some circuits that probably should not be critical, and again, what that will do will give us a better capacity to manage outages in the future. And maybe the, the next major thing that you'll hear about, and we will talk about on Thursday with the council, is the Energy Awareness Campaign, where we're talking about whatever the crisis is. It could be anything from weather, but it could be, you know, a major line went down because of age or a cyber incident. What do we need to do to get communities and members of our, our community ready for any extreme energy conditions, and how can we better coordinate with our owner, the city, the county, and SAWs in the terms of when we have an emergency, and, and help critical care customers? Those are some of the major things we're working on. So that, I think, are risks that we're trying to manage and mitigate, and that is the, that's the focus of the team. That concludes my report.
Do we have any questions, comments? Ms. Cole Williams, CEO. Okay. If not, then we'll continue to move ahead and to Agenda Item Number Five, Resolution for Appointment of Board Secretary for the CPS Energy Board of Trustees. Ms. Ramirez, could you please read the resolution?
Yes, sir. The resolution approving appointment of Secretary for CPS Energy Board of Trustees. Whereas the CPS Energy Board of Trustees is required to designate and authorize specific officers and staff to conduct business on behalf of CPS Energy, and whereas, effective December 7th, 2009, CPS Energy appointed Carolyn E. Schellman to serve as the Board Secretary, and whereas, Ms. Schellman announced her June 16th, 2021 resignation, and whereas, effective June 16th, 2021, CPS Energy appointed Ms. Shanna M. Ramirez to serve as interim Chief Legal and Ethics Officer, to oversee all of CPS Energy's legal functions, and whereas, in her new role as Chief Legal and Ethics Officer, Ms. Ramirez will assume responsibility for managing and directing the legal activities that require Board of Trustees approval, and will be providing support to the board related to these legal matters, and now therefore be it resolved that the CPS Energy Board of Trustees hereby approves the appointment of Shanna M. Ramirez as Secretary to the Board of Trustees effective June 16th, 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Do we have a motion?
I move.
Moved by Mr. Kelly. We have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Gonzalez. Oh, and could you do a roll call, Ms. Ramirez?
Yes. Trustee Steve?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, motion carries, 5-0. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. If we would move on to the next item, Agenda Six, Demand and Supply, we have Frank, Mr. Frank Almerez.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, everybody. It's good to see you all in person. I'll just take a second, because Paul actually gave a thorough overview of what you're going to see in these presentation items, but there's a couple of things I really want to quickly highlight. Obviously, growth is, long-term prospects for growth in San Antonio are very strong. We expect to add a million more residents to the community by mid-century. You'll hear about that and how we think about planning with, for that growth in the context of also having a significant amount of retirements from units that are reaching the end of their planned lives, mostly gas, steam, but other units as well. We're going to talk about the challenge and opportunity and how the entire industry is rethinking reserve margins in a world where, you know, weather can create localized diversions where demand is very, very high. And in our system, we now know that we can be a two-system peak, a two-peak system, excuse me. Our winter peak this last year was greater than any summer peak that we've ever had. We have to plan for that, which will lead us into the third conversation, which is really a comparison of what our plan would look like. On the one hand, the way that we have it today with solar in the mix, and on the other hand, where we don't have any incremental solar and storage beyond what we have now, but rather replace that with, with natural gas. So there's a qualitative and a quantitative evaluation of what those cases look like. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Kevin Paula, who will start with the initial conversation. So, Kevin, thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Good afternoon, trustees. Very pleased to be in front of you today to talk, continue our discussion, if you will, along the flexible path. We've had many conversations over the last several months, talking about the flexible path journey and our need to, or transition our generation fleet. And so one of the key elements we have to obviously consider as we look at that transition is the need to continue to supply our, our community's needs with affordable and reliable energy. And so that has two aspects to it, obviously. You have the demand side, as Paula and Frank had mentioned, and then certainly the supply side, as far as our generation resources that are available to serve that need. And so today's presentation that I will give is a brief introduction really into both of those topics. And so we'll start, we'll talk about our demand projections, how we, as Frank said, what the growth that we expect, both in population, and how that translates into peak demand usage. And then we'll also talk about supply position and the upcoming transition of our generation fleet. As far as the agenda here, we'll start with a view of our pillars, again, talk about population growth, demand growth, and then finish with a discussion on supply. As we look to, to continue to move down our flexible path, you know, the decisions that we will make are grounded in these guiding pillars and the foundation of being financially responsible. That will guide the decisions that we make here along, along our flexible path, decisions that we make as far as how we meet our community's needs, and then certainly the decisions that we make around which units to retire, when to retire them, and what, what they ultimately get replaced with. As we turn to the next slide and look at population growth, and I think Frank had mentioned this, I won't spend a whole lot of time on it, but as we look at projections for the area, you know, the San Antonio, the greater metropolitan statistical area is projected to gain about a million residents over the next 20 to 30 years. That's in spite of the pandemic, in spite of any potential impacts from the winter storm. So we are looking at continued strong growth. As we turn to Slide Six, that strong growth in, in population certainly drives, you know, usage from our customers. So as we look at additional usage from our customers, we also look at the success that we've had over the years in terms of energy efficiency and conservation. Our STEP program has been very effective in helping to mitigate demand growth and energy usage here in the community. And so we've factored in, you know, the expectation of continued success in energy efficiency and conservation through our Flex STEP program. But when you look at, at the combination of those, the continued growth in, in population as well as what we think we can save through conservation and energy efficiency, we're still looking at about a one and a half percent growth rate in terms of our annual peak demand. And so that's a consideration as we look at our flexible path, that not only do we have to look at how we replace some of our existing units, but we have to account for that continued growth in usage from our community. As we turn to Slide Seven, I'll transition into more of a discussion on, on the supply side. As Paula mentioned, we have about 3,000 megawatts of generation capacity that we're looking to make decisions on over the next decade or so. Those 3,000 megawatts are shown here on this slide, and they start with some of our older gas, steam units, the three Bronig units, and then the two Summers units. Now those units, those five units are reaching the end of their design life, so we'll have to make decisions, in part driven by timing, about, you know, what to do with those units. And then we also have shown the capacity from our two Spruce coal units. Although those are not, you know, near the end of their design life, there are other considerations that we think are very important that we need to look at and the community should look at as we look to potentially make decisions around the future of the coal units. But as we look at those seven units, those 3,000 megawatts of capacity, ultimately, one of the things that is very important that we must thoughtfully think through is the sequence, you know, and the order of how we make decisions and which changes we make to, to the plants, which ones we retire, which ones we replace first, and that collective order in addressing those 3,000 megawatts. As we turn to Slide Eight, this is more focused, obviously, on, on our two coal units, but this slide is meant to show some of the upcoming environmental regulations and some of the associated investments that we're going to have to make to remain in compliance environmentally, assuming we continue to run those units as coal units. So just to orient you on the slide, the three boxes that are not shaded, so the white background labeled as coal ash regulation, the Spruce One nitrous oxide regulation, and then the sulfur dioxide scrubber water regulation, now those are specific projects or potential projects, specific investments that we would make to ensure that environmental compliance. that we would make to ensure that environmental compliance. The two boxes with the blue shading are more milestones. When we look at the top line, for example, in 2026, we're assuming that there will be regulation on carbon dioxide emissions. We believe that will be, or take the form of a tax on carbon dioxide. And so that will obviously add to the cost structure of the generation from our coal units. When you look at the blue box below the timeline, that's meant to show a notice that we would have to provide to the Environmental Protection Agency about our intention regarding coal operations. So if we intend to continue coal operation beyond the end of 2025 without a scrubber water project, we would need to make that notification to the Environmental Protection Agency by the end of 2025. And then we would be able to continue to operate the coal units without that scrubber water project through the end of 2028. But at that point, they would have to cease operations. So part of the key takeaway on this slide is that there are, you know, significant investments beyond our ongoing annual capital and O and M spend that we would need to make to ensure continued environmentally compliant coal operations. As we turn to Slide Nine, this is meant to show just a tentative plant retirement timeline. As Paula said at the beginning, this is not intended to indicate any kind of decision or commitment. These are some tentative dates. And as you look at the boxes, it doesn't show up very well, I can see now in the background, but the box at the bottom is labeled as Retirement Timing Driven by End of Design Life. That shading, if you will, would apply to really everything except for the two Spruce units. So as we look at the next decade, the near-term transition plan, you know, you see the three Brawning units and the two Summers units. As I said earlier, those decisions are made, are really going to be governed by approaching that end of the design life. The two Spruce units, you know, we have a little more latitude in terms of timing, but certainly the environmental regulation is something that we need to consider. We're showing on this slide, for example, that Spruce One could retire by the end of the decade. We've got Spruce Two up top, labeled as illustrative, but really, you know, there's some opportunity there, and we could retire that unit or potentially, as we talked about in our flexible path, a resource plan that was released to the public earlier this year. We could convert that to gas operations. So that, those decisions and actions around Spruce Two could happen, you know, as early as this decade. And then, you know, it could continue beyond that. So there are some options we have around the Spruce units. Slide Ten kind of brings this picture together as far as supply and demand. So it shows kind of five-year increments here over the next decade. But you see the two lines, if you will, at the top of the chart. So that bottom line is meant to show our customer obligations, the obligations that we need to serve, both our community's needs and our long-term sales obligations that we have. And then the top line is the top of what we call our reserve margin. So on the next presentation, John will cover reserve margin in a little more detail. But we do plan, as we plan our generation fleet, you know, to be able to meet that reserve margin. So we have excess capacity available to account for any, you know, changes in demand as we move through the years, or to account, you know, on a daily operational basis for any outages that we may occur on our units. You see, as you get to the end of the decade, you know, that steady upward trend on that, on that demand line, that represents the 1.5% growth rate that I mentioned earlier. You look at the supply side, so the, you know, stacked bars, if you will, in 2021, we're showing that as all blue. That's our current fleet. All of our nuclear, coal, gas, the existing renewables that we have, that's all represented in the dark blue. And so as you go through the decade, what you start to see is that blue line decreases and we see a market increase in the green dashed line, which we're labeling as our Flex Power Bundles. But that's the future, you know, replacement technology, whether that could be anything from renewables, storage, it could be low-emitting, flexible generation as far as peaking capacity. There'd be other technologies that we have not seen yet. And I think, again, as Paula has mentioned many times, that's part of the beauty of the flexible path, is that we're not locked into a specific technology. As technology advances, we're positioned to take advantage of that. And then finally, I want to leave you with these key takeaways. You know, as we look to transition our generation fleet, obviously, one of the things we have to do is to continue to meet our community's projected increase in peak usage. We believe it's important to prioritize the plants that are approaching the end of their design life. We know that we have community discussions continuing about the potential options for our coal units. I think that was also part of the community dialogue we wanted to, you know, continue and enhance with the release of our flexible path resource plan. But ultimately, I think the last two items are very critical. I mentioned earlier, sequencing is important, you know, the decisions that we make, the order in which we go about replacing each of these seven, you know, generating units I mentioned. And ultimately, as you, not only sequencing, you heard it, I think, from Paula many times, but velocity matters. In order to be able to provide reliable and affordable energy, we have to be very thoughtful, I think, on how quickly we address each of those decisions and each of those actions. So ultimately, maintaining reliable and customer, affordable power for our customers will be essential as we look to transition our generation fleet. So that concludes my prepared comments for today.
Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
I have one question. The gentleman that spoke with citizens to be heard, I didn't get the exact numbers, but the implications are that where our customers are using a whole lot more energy per capita than the customers in Austin. I have not heard that before. I'm wondering if you're familiar with that. Do you know if that's a true statement? And if so, do you have any idea why that's true?
Mr. Kelly, I do not have that statistic off the top of my head. I apologize. So I can't address it directly. You know, I think when you compare Austin and us, I think we're very proud of our energy efficiency, our conservation, our STEP programs. I think my demand response perspective, we have a very strong program. I think we look at that as successes. But as far as the direct comparison of per capita usage, I'd have to get back with you on that, sir.
Madam CEO, is that something we could look into?
Yes, absolutely. We can look into that. I, we also have started looking at some of this on the RAC, but we have some data that we can, we can share with you. We are able to compare ourselves on a national average. Some of the challenges that we think we have, though inherently, is Austin has a lot more. I mean, the homes may be older, but the, the buildings are newer and more efficient in general. Our housing stock, our, the way that we look at housing is a challenge. And we also think that with our high level of customers who need additional support, the energy efficiency and conservation program can't fix things like foundation, and those become real challenges in terms of keeping homes efficient. But we will bring you some more clarity on that and more insight. We'll take that as an actual item.
Good. We're looking forward to hearing that, hearing from you on that right there. You gonna, would you have that ready for us at the next regular board meeting?
We can, we can have.
Not the one on 28th, but.
Oh, absolutely.
By the next one.
Sure.
If you've got that available for us.
Yeah, July. We can do that.
July. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Yes, Mayor. Wait, no, no, go ahead, Mr. Kelly. You, you're still on.
The other question I had is particularly as it relates to Spruce, are you looking at any coal-to-gas conversions?
Yes, sir. I think that's one of, we're looking at that option particularly on Spruce Two. That is one of the options that we looked at and showed in the flexible path resource plan. And I think that's, I think there's, between the two units, I think with Spruce One being older, I think it doesn't make as much sense potentially on Spruce One. Spruce Two, I think, being a much newer unit, that, I think it is a viable project that we are looking at and believe it's one of the scenarios that we definitely should consider.
Absolutely. Mayor?
Thank you for the presentation. Speaking of the Flex STEP, prior to the winter storm, and I think maybe in the middle of the pandemic there somewhere, we were talking about the Flex Bundle, RFP. What's the status of that? And is there a new timeline? Certainly, it's been impacted.
Well, actually, you're, you're an excellent person to have at the agenda. But in general, I'll hand it off to Kevin shortly here. But yeah, the group under Kevin have been working. We have an enterprise group, and so they've been looking at the different solar options. And in fact, I think they're getting close to, they've narrowed down like the first layer of evaluations on solar, and we're, we're looking to be able to make recommendations on some initial projects, I think, in the next 60 days or so. And then we're continuing to look at all the different type of technologies. When we start to get into firming capacity, it's a lot more complicated to compare the different resources. But, but we can actually bring an update in July, but.
Yes, ma'am. We can certainly do that. As Paula said, you know, and Mr. Mayor, as you said, the winter storm has had a bit of an impact on our timeline. Honestly, I think the bigger impact has been the strength of the responses that we saw. We, we may have mentioned, I think, at an earlier update, but we received nearly 650 proposals, you know, as far as different projects, different types of structures. That's many hundred more than we had honestly anticipated. So we've been extremely pleased by that strong response, but it's required us to take some additional time to make sure we do the right amount of due diligence to work through that. As Paula said, we're working on narrowing down from a solar perspective, what we've called our prioritized solar. But we're looking at moving forward on a project that we think would be part of the bundle regardless, based on the strength of the, of the project. And so we look to make that recommendation. As Paula said, I think the next 60 days or so is very good timing. The rest of the bundle, we think, is going to take us probably through the end of the summer to work through that final evaluation and get a recommendation around the collection of projects that will go into the bundle.
Okay. Because that was the, that was the plan. We were going to address the solar 900-megawatt capacity. And then as we're going through the firming capacity, innovative elements of the RFP, we're going to take that as a separate discussion. That's still the plan. So we'll get an update next month?
Yeah, we can give an update in July. And the one thing I will say, the prioritized solar that Kevin talks about is really where we're trying to insert those megawatts in the service territory here, and at their most optimal. And it's also easier for us to observe and watch the project development since it's right here in our service territory. Some of the other projects are across Texas, and that's, that'll take a little bit more time. But still, the easier, I say the easier evaluation is solar, and the team has a really good handle of all those proposals.
Good. Well, if I recall, there was also five continents represented in the 650.
I think we got 10. Well, 10 countries. We got 10, 10 languages, 10 countries.
Yes. Truly a global RFP, something, you know, amidst all of the tumult over the year, we can be proud of in terms of responses to that RFP. So I am interested in that. I would like an update. And I don't want us to delay things unnecessarily as well, especially with, with regard to that 900-megawatts. Same thing on Flex STEP. Where are we with Flex STEP?
Flex STEP, we launched after the Flex Power Bundle, but we should probably be ready to give you some type of status update in July as well.
All of the Flex programs, okay. And then with regard to the discussions that are going on with the transitioning of fleet, you're having community discussions, you mentioned stakeholder discussions. Who are those? And are there any, is there any input that you've already gleaned? What, what's the tenor of those conversations so far?
I would tell you, we're just getting restarted again. I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna hit, of course, the RAC is gonna look at all types of things, I think, but their agenda is huge. So they're, they're included, but we're also have, gonna have community. Now that we can get back out, we can, we're gonna be able to go to neighborhoods, we're gonna be able to talk to the school districts, to the associations. I mean, we're gonna blitz it as hard as we did, if not harder, for the flexible path in the first place.
And so when, when do you expect that the board will have a proposal? From all of that input and from the analysis that we're doing internally, when do you think we'll arrive at a proposal with regard to, I mean, I, I see we have a deadline. By 2025, we've got to make a decision, right? That's a decision point to the EPA, if not to the community. So obviously, we're, we're gonna have to have our ducks in a row and probably be firm towards a path by then. When do you think we will get to that point at the board?
I'm really hoping that we'll be able to put some viable options that we think are the, you know, best choices. Again, all for discussion and for board to hear where, the way we obtained input and what people are concerned about, let alone what they're passionate about. I'm hoping that next year, you'll start to, to hear what those are. I mean, we were making a lot of progress before. There's, you know, technology is coming along, but in some cases, like for hydrogen, for example, I mean, that's not going to be the easiest project to do. And there, there are other things that we could be looking at in the interim. So we think we'll be bringing you some ideas about that and what we think we can do. Now, in reality, we were talking before the storm about the potential to convert Spruce Two, for example, as Kevin mentioned, to, to a natural gas unit. And I think that alone, we could spend a lot of this year talking about the merits and the challenges of doing that, knowing and getting the board's input after we give you more about what the community thinks about that. I think that might be one of the earlier decisions that we can make. If it's not that choice, and we say we, that the board chooses that we just close it and look for completely, you know, different technology, that might push us off of next year. But we'll look at everything. We will have everything on the table. And as we come to you, we'll tell you where we are with the other evaluation technologies.
Well, updates starting next month would be helpful. And then as we go along, as more, we get more clarity on that, it would be helpful to know where the discussion is headed.
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll make sure we'll provide more frequent.
Have any other questions, comments by board members?
I don't know how to articulate this. So I think where I still struggle is not understanding that we have several big projects, right? I just don't get a sense of, okay, we have five projects, you know, Flex Plan, the mayor just mentioned a couple of these things. How are they by priority based on feedback from RAC or priority based on existing data that we have already? How are those decisions going to be made? Again, one of the, one of the big, big ask as, as we're investing or deciding to make big, big decisions is, are they equitable? What, what, what areas need those investments first versus just saying, we, you know, we have a deadline, we gotta make compliance? I, I think that's where I still struggle with. It's not clear to me based on where people live, who is the last district to get $50 million investments versus someone at 78207 that hasn't received any investment? Like, how are we making those decisions other than, you know, those plants are dying, or there's an environmental pressures to close things? So I think that's where I need more assistance and clarity of real data that helps me understand why we're making those decisions outside of just they're gonna expire.
Great questions.
And I think those are the things that I really would like to get a better feel for, you know. And then, you know, what are the projects that clearly like, this is Cardroom Four, this is an equitable decision, this is what, this is 40 million? It's just, for me, it's just one presentation after presentation and not still, you know, I, I think I get it, but, but still, it's, it's very high level, I think, too much.
Well, one thing that I've asked the group to do, that they will do, is they're gonna push every single option through the value pillars. And to your point, when we look at the criteria for environmental responsibility, we're gonna, our goal is to bring in the social equity component through that pillar to tell you that we're also, we did not break our capital plan down by zip code and location, as you indicated. And so there's certain things that we're doing on the front end to match that data up, but we're gonna push every option through. And maybe one other way to look at this is, you know, it's kind of like if you have a fleet, and we say we have a fleet of internal combustion engines, we have 3,000, you know, vehicles, which we do here. But even at that, you would never replace the 3,000 at one time, right? So we'll, we'll start to show you buckets, and that 3,000 is actually, actually subcomponents of buckets. So we'll, we'll do a better job of trying to group for you. You won't see this big one master plan. It'll be like hybrids first, and then all-electric, and then those kind of things. But we'll, we'll give you better visuals on that.
And I guess, again, there's a lot of expectations. We've been working on a couple of these items, and I understand it's complex. But we're, we're constantly under pressure of why we're making these investments. We're constantly under pressure of, you know, why is it that these certain areas historically have not received adequate investments? Or like even today's question was an excellent question, not being able to have real-time data to, to understand why our users use more than Austin. You know, that kind of stuff will always come up. And I think, again, as we're making investments in our digital infrastructure, outside of what I've seen, like this, this significant investment, four years, all that software is modernized. If it's modernized, that means there's data analytics, which means that we should get more of a, not a macro, but a micro perspective of what our users are using and why. And that data, I think, is very crucial when we have these presentations. I just don't want a high-level presentation or, you know, or being asked to make, without truly understanding our user base. And then, how are they using the technology? And why we should make that investment? I just want more objective, concrete, data-driven, this, you know, so that we can make good decisions for everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you. There's not any other questions? Thank you. We'll move on to item number seven, summer and WFP planning. Mr. John?
Mr. John.
Good afternoon, board members, and pleasure to be here to talk about summer and winter peak planning. You know, our objective with this presentation is to gain an understanding, you know, of our winter and summer peak, two-peak system. So we'll take a little deeper look at the demand and supply aspects that Mr. Paulo introduced and its impact on our long-range planning. Next slide, please. Our agenda here today, we'll review the guiding pillars that, you know, you know, direct our decisions. We'll take a look at reserve margin. There's some updates needed with that, that calculation. We'll also take a look at, and talk a bit more about collaborative research opportunities that can help us, you know, with our reserve margin update, some of the needs there. And we'll also take a look at, you know, summer and winter peak planning and introduce average peak, stress peaks, and in the context of long-range planning. Guiding pillars, you know, and our financial stability, you know, guide our decisions, and I know we've, we've covered that in our previous presentation. So reserve margin, demand and supply need to remain in balance. And, you know, there are times when they, you know, could potentially get out of balance. So the idea is to have that extra capacity. It's the extra capacity needed to meet customer demand, you know, just, just above the, the customer peak demand needs. Now, you know, that reserve is needed because of uncertainties. Power plants could generate less than expected for a number of reasons. Reasons, you know, customer demand could, could increase more than, than expected due to weather and other factors. So, you know, given that, the goal is to have sufficient reserves for long-range planning reasons. There are, you know, short-term, there are short-term tools that we have to, again, close a gap if there's a gap there, whether it be day ahead, month ahead, week ahead, hour ahead, things like that. This reserve margin methodology has been used for decades, you know, industry-wide and long-range planning. You know, it's, it's a fairly easy concept to grasp, but, you know, it's percent, it's, typically delivered in terms of percent of demand, percent capacity above that peak demand expected. So that methodology has worked well. You know, it was developed in a time when we had nuclear, coal, gas, hydroelectric. It was, you know, resources that were predictable, well-understood, and that's changing, honestly. Industry's changing, so there's need to update that, that reserve margin methodology. The numbers throughout North America that, that indicate a reliable system using this method is around 10 to 20% with a 15% average, very common. So as I mentioned, industry's changing, so the reserve margin methodology needs to, you know, be assessed for some updates. Things driving that, you know, loss of conventional coal, some older gas resources. We also have, you know, new gas resources replacing coal. We have substantial renewable additions replacing some of those coal resources. And those, the output of those renewable resources are, you know, they vary, so they're, they're uncertain. And then there's also other things that, that, that could be experienced with the grid, you know, system-wide lack of natural gas is one example, extreme weather risks, and even combination of those factors, you know, can impact this methodology. So it's, it's due for some, a bit of a refresh. And one thing to address that, there's a couple programs here highlighted. We have, we're members of this industry coalition, as Paula has mentioned. The one on the left is the Low Carbon Resources Initiative. That's headed up by EPRI, the Electrical Power Research Institute, the R and D arm of the electric industry, as well as the Gas Technology Institute. Those two entities are heading up this Low Carbon Resource Initiative. The goal is to, you know, advance the development of low and zero-carbon resources. We've got 41 entities involved. They've, they've, you know, surpassed $100 million in, in funding. So along with that, well, there's new resources coming into the mix, as well as the need to, you know, manage, you know, our capacity needs and, and update reserve margin, and really with the goal to, to make electric service more resilient to, you know, significant disruptions in supply. Now we'll move into, just look at summer day, and we're, we're looking at the demand alone here. The bottom of that line is the, the average summer demand expected or load. The top line is the reserve margin calculation, and in this case, we're using 13.75%. And this load is a typical summer load, and you see the, the peak there at hour 19 or 7:00 PM. That, that's really air conditioning-driven in the summer. And we also show two dots up there. We got a, a average peak orange dot. That's the typical methodology for long-range planning. You use the average summer peak expectation. And we see that, you know, lands right at the, you know, bottom of the reserve margin band. We also show the stress peak. And the stress peak is, you know, about 600 megawatts greater than that average peak. It does fall within a reserve margin band. Average peak assuming about 102 degree Fahrenheit, stress peak assuming 111 degree Fahrenheit. That, that was, that's last seen in the year 2000. Now, we're, we're showing this projection in 2025. That, that is important because we've had some changes, we're assuming some changes in our, in our, you know, portfolio. We're assuming that Brawnig units, 860 megawatts, the aging gas steam units have retired at that point at the end of 2024. We also assume the Flex Power Bundle is fully implemented, the 900 megawatts of solar, 50 megawatts of storage, and 500 megawatts of firming. And we have four years of load growth that is factored into that, that curve. But what we conclude from this chart is that the stress peak is when that reserve margin band, so it, it indicates, you know, a reasonable long-range planning projection. So now we'll, we'll layer in our resources, our, our supply on top of that demand view. The band view did not change, we just layered in resources. So our supply there is shown in, in blue bars and green. The blue bars being the nuclear, coal, gas, and storage assets. We, we forecast those to produce at about 100% on the average at, in this, in this view. We also show in the green bars, those are our renewable resources. And we show a range of expected output at that peak hour, that 7:00 PM peak hour, about 16 to 63%, depending on the location of the, the wind resource. You get a little different profile near the coast as, and a little different profile from the West Texas wind resources. We also assume solar would produce at about 50% at that peak hour. So, you know, given that, those are the typical patterns we see, and typical summer day peak planning has been that focal point. It's been that, that summer greatest expectation for demand that, that we plan to typically. We also plan to, you know, meet our winter needs, and this is a, a view of the winter day in 2025 again. In showing the demand, you see a much different load profile. You see an 8:00 AM and an 8:00 PM peak, that two-peak or, you know, that double peak you see on a winter day, really driven by heating, lighting, you know, cooking demands. And it tends to, the peak tends to occur on the average at 8:00 AM, and so we're showing the average peak and the stress peak. And we noticed that the, you know, stress peak being 1,100 megawatts above the average, you notice that it's, you know, outside that reserve margin band. And it, and it indicates a need for incorporating new, you know, ideas and thoughts and, and analysis into winter stress peak needs, you know, into long-range planning. Like the previous chart, like the previous summer day chart, we overlay the, our resources that are available during the winter, and we show in the nuclear, coal, gas storage there in the blue bars, you know, producing at 100%. And at 8:00 AM, the expectation on the average for, for wind is to range from 19 to 43% of its maximum capability or, or nameplate capacity, as it's called. And the solar at peak, again, the, the sun is not quite up yet or just, just rising there at 8:00 AM on a winter day. So we assume, right, you know, just under 1% of the capacity of solar to be available. But also, you know, we do, you know, expect some reasonable output from solar, you know, as the, during the daylight hours. So as we look at this, we, we see that we need to be mindful of our, you know, our conventional or controllable resource mix, the blue bars, in, in the context of winter stress peaks. We also need to be cognizant of renewables and, you know, planning and analyzing and being aware of the potential for impaired renewable production and being ready, you know, at every hour of the day that we would experience something of that nature. So the key takeaways, you know, we talked about the industry coalition that we're a member of to, you know, kind of advance the zero and low-carbon resource development. Talked about the, the need for reserve margin update to, to make our system, make sure it's resilient. And also, you know, incorporating the streak, you know, the stress peak factors into our, our planning efforts. And just some examples there that are in motion are, you know, hardening our facilities even further, you know, assessing physical gas fuel supply, and also, you know, analyzing the potential for impaired renewable production. So, you know, very important to maintain our, you know, and satisfy the guiding pillars of, you know, resiliency, reliability, customer affordability. And so that concludes my prepared remarks.
Do we have any board member questions, comments?
Have you started to assess any of the cost for some of the things that you've mentioned, harden our facilities, physical gas, fuel supply, et cetera? Are we going to start putting some numbers to that, or is this conceptual, or do you see us actually doing this?
And you're referring to the hardening of the facilities?
Yeah, those, those things that you're talking about.
Well, we, you know, hardening, the weatherization piece that we have is, you know, something that we've already invested in, around $20 million in total, but we're gonna look at new standards on how to harden the infrastructure that we have and the grid. I mean, I think the grid hardening, the, the project I talked about earlier that you all approved back in February, that's gonna help us improve the resiliency of what we have, and then we're gonna have control systems that help us. Now, if you really want to talk about hardening in terms of undergrounding, we, we don't have the ability or the resources, even if we thought about in terms of asking for it from, for the board and the council, that is a huge ticket. So we won't, we won't be able to, like, fully harden everything physically, but we will be able to improve systems and improve their redundancy and their resiliency overall, both on the grid side and on the, on the power side. And then when we look for new solutions, we're looking for, again, the way to also bundle to give us the benefits of firming capacity that is not controlled completely by weather or influenced by weather. And that's why, again, bundling them gives us that ability to make the overall delivery more reliable.
What I'm driving at is, is kind of a cost-benefit analysis. I was talking to someone the other day, and they made a, kind of a ludicrous analogy, but, but he was saying, my house could be robbed, somebody could rob my house, but I have a security system, and I watch what I'm doing, I keep the garage door shut, et cetera, et cetera. But I could still be robbed. If I wanted to make sure I was never robbed, I could build a fortress around my house and put machine guns on each corner, and by God, I'd never get robbed, no question about it. It would cost me a ton of money, a ton of money, but I'd never get robbed. So the question here is like Yuri, a once-in-a-biblical proportions type of event. So how do we do the cost-benefit analysis? How much are we going to spend to make sure that if we have another Yuri, we'll be protected, recognizing it might be 50 years before that happens, kind of like the machine guns on the corner of my house? What kind of cost-benefit analysis are we gonna do? Or is that something that's still to come? But I think at some point, Paulo, we're gonna have to look at that.
We have some elements of that which we can share with you. I mean, again, to harden on the grid side for the reliability issues, I mean, we had issues on weather, but we also had equipment failure, and that happened, a lot of that was above the line, lines that went down and equipment failures, so we'd have to, to take it underground. We have some rough estimates that we can give you from that standpoint. On the, on, there's a, there's a deep complexity on the generation side because quite a bit of the problems we had on the generation side wasn't really in the, the systems themselves. And we can, we can do a quantification. How much more can we, can we improve the ability to handle long-duration weather patterns, extreme weather? We could do that. What we couldn't control was always the delivery of the commodity of the supply. And that comes, some of the, a good portion of the failure came from not the utility side, but the supply side on the natural gas piece. But we can come and show you what the quantifications of the things we do have and talk to you about where those gaps are that, that we're looking for help from the legislature to give us more assurances about hardening the supply system on the, on the natural gas side. We can, we can start bringing you some things.
I want to piggyback off of Mr. Kelly right there, right there. Yes, that was, that was a good, good question. You know, what, you know, we have, we should have learned a valuable lesson in, in February by looking at the 2011 report, the 2015 report, and 2019 report. It covered that, zero degrees. It covered that fuel supplies, on, on, within our environment, having our own fuel supplies and having our off-fuel supplies. But when I looked at the pictures of all the frozen pipes and all the things like that, it, it just brings a lot of questions in my mind. Were we really prepared for this right here? And if it comes, if it comes about again, what preparedness do we have to make sure that our customers have the electric and the power and resilience? You know, I would like to know, this is good, but I'd like to know a little bit more about that. I like to, you know, I just want, I feel like Mr. Kelly, I just want the best effort on the table that we've done, the best we could do without putting the machine guns on each corner. You know, I want to know that. I want to know, what are we doing?
Yes, sure.
Because, and I've been asking that questions about, you know, supplies, gas supplies. We know that, that it didn't come from the wells. If people say it came from the gas wells, no, that's, that's not true. No, it came from the reserve. And how it comes from the reserve to us, that could be a problem because the gas freezes, it was the marster and the water vapor and all of that that froze, maybe the cutoff valves and all of that. How are we going to, how are we gonna work with our people that's supplying us with the natural gas to get to us? And how are we gonna, you know, when I looked at the pictures and saw that the freezing inside that, inside the, the units had, had frozen and things of that sort? Because when I worked for the gas company and we had that substation and we had to do that maintenance between there, then I always know in that gas that we have to make sure that that marster and stuff, they're not getting it and freeze the handles so the gas can flow freely there. So I want to know, have, are we putting our best forward? Because I keep hearing we spend 17, 18 million dollars. If we've done that in the last 11 years, then we've let our people down. There should be a lot more money spent in trying to make sure that the power, that, that we keep this power off. So I would like to piggy on that and get more information like Mr. Kelly on this because I'm just not happy with what I just heard. I want to, I want to know more. I want to know more to get to that point because I don't want to see this happen again under my watch. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'm all for that, more data and cost-benefit analysis, but if we do the same calculus based on cost-benefit analysis they did in 2011. But if we do the same calculus based on cost benefit analysis they did in 2011 and 2015 and 2019, we wouldn't have experienced what we just went through. Every climate assessment that I've seen nationally or internationally says that these kinds of events are going to become more frequent, and we have to harden, we have to get resilient. And that's probably money well spent, as long as we've got our projections proper. I was interested, Paula, in, in hardening, and obviously, we're going to be hearing more about that in terms of how we handle Yuri going forward. I was thinking plant level resilience as opposed to the wires between, for the distribution systems. We know that's a big problem. And frankly, we had the cost benefit analysis on that 15 years ago. There was a fund, I guess, created with the city and CPS to potentially underground utilities, and somebody made the calculus a long time ago. It's too expensive. And so that fund was depleted. You know, it would be a miracle of miracles, and, and I, I would expect that we would have much less reliability problems in our big promise to the customers that we're going to keep the lights on. We would have a much easier time to do that if we had undergrounded 30 years ago. But we, we cast the die. So I just want to make sure that as we're seeking data, we're also considering projections with the new science and with the new understanding of ROI in terms of resilience. The other thing I was going to ask, we've had this conversation going on for a long time, and Ed has been particularly pointed about the need for reserve. And if I read the slides correctly, our average reserve is 13.75, is that, is that correct?
Threshold number.
That's our, our typical planning number, yes.
Okay. So is that, I mean, generally speaking, that's where we fall now?
That's where we plan to, but actuals, actuals tend to be higher today.
What, I'm curious, because part of what we're experiencing statewide is a result of statewide grid issues and management. So what is the average reserve of any partner that's involved in ERCOT?
Yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to put that information up for.
What, what is the average reserve of ERCOT generally?
I think we're a little, aren't we getting, are we around the 13%?
It's, it's around 15% this year, and then growing over the next five years.
State?
The statewide, ERCOT-wide, yes.
Okay.
That's a, yeah, threshold number. I mean, we've had times where we've had a whole lot more, like, we've had a reserve margin of over 20%. And so we typically contribute disproportionately favorable to the state. The tech, you know, San Antonio is long, and we've contributed to the state's reserve. And so we, to have it broken down by all the participants, I guess, you know, we, we can see what we can get from ERCOT to help us with that.
Their average summer reserve is 19.
But it's improving, it's improved since then. Some of the other challenges are how they count renewables because, again, that reserve margin looks different based on the profile that John explained in the winter, right? It doesn't provide, and typically, the numbers you've seen have all been summer peaking reserve margins. So there's some dynamics that we, we can bring to you and show you what that looks like.
Because, I mean, that's, that's the story that we had been hearing for a number of years about CPS is that we were carrying the lion's share of reserve margin for the state for a long time. And, you know, to, to the benefit of everyone. But if that has changed, that also needs to be considered because part of our resiliency is going to be making sure that we have capacity or that we have reserve when we do hit those unexpected peaks, so.
And I think, Paula, you mentioned, what are the constraints in working with the state of Texas? Like, what are our limitations? I think you briefly mentioned that we're going to work with the city at a legislative perspective to see what else we can do, right? So it's very easy for us to sit here and say, "We want to do this, we're going to do this, we're going to do that." But what are the constraints within legislation, limitations that we have, right? You know, I, I could want to build this fortress with the guns, and then the state of Texas says no, right? So I, I guess that's another area that we need clarification, you know, as, as we're planning for resiliency, as we're working towards making some really big decisions. What are those constraints? What are the things that we can and cannot do and still have, you know, that resiliency component that we also desire? Well, in general, and, and John can chime in, the state will let a, a utility, a participant, put more capacity on the grid. They really, they really try to be agnostic, and if you want to put, you know, all solar on the grid, they're gonna, they want you to because they, we ultimately know that we have a lot of aging infrastructure on there. But what we have is an energy-only market that only really focuses on energy produced but doesn't really invest in firm capacity, you know, in, in, like a, like a capacity market payment. So it, it searches for extreme pricing, of which case, good for some participants, bad for customers because the more volatile it is, the more, that more expensive the bills are. So one of the biggest constraints is the design is not set up for it to search currently for creating more firm reserve margin that would help the entire state. Now, I know they have conversations about that, but that really wasn't addressed at that level, you know, during the legislature, maybe in the special session. So there are just design issues that we have, let alone, you know, being a free market. San Antonio has always, to your point, Mayor, said, "You have, you need enough capacity to cover, and we want to, we want to be able to cover our own gaps." So if a plant has to have maintenance, we want to know that we're not going to the market at times of extreme pricing, that we can still supply it out off of our base load capacity, and we've been like that forever. Part of what John is talking about, too, is talking to you all as we give you input from the community, we still think being what we call long in generation, being able to self-supply backup power for, for the primary benefit of San Antonio customers is important. But if we're the only ones doing that, our bills are going to go up faster than everybody else's. And that's where it really becomes the, the issue. Hardening, hardening beyond current standards and other peers in the state can be done, but if we do it, again, at the wrong velocity, velocity that we're passionate about, but it has a price tag. To your point, undergrounding is absolutely unfathomable, like putting a machine gun on every, you know, corner of your, your building. But there are still other things that we can do, and the, and the point is, does San Antonio want to bear that for the benefit of every other participant? Or can we? Can we even afford to do that? But we'll bring you some, some more context around that. Important questions.
So I've got a question for Mr. Cosmo. So you've been talking about long-range planning and looking at 2025, but I think what our customers would like to know in, in terms of reserve margin, what's the outlook for the remainder of the summer?
The CPS Energy outlook for the summer? Yeah, we're, I'd, I'd have to get that information, Paula. I mean, it's, Mr. Dean.
What's puzzling about that question?
I don't have the information here with me, so we'll have to get that.
In, in general, ERCOT believes it has enough capacity to handle the demand, and that includes everything that we contribute as well. But I think what we experienced about a week ago was, there was enough capacity, but there were some unplanned outages. We didn't have any severe outages in our portfolio, but they were unplanned outages somewhere else. So I think we'll still see some stress points during the summer, but in general, when looking at our capacity and everything across the grid, is believed that we have enough to manage the needs of Texas at this time. It's going to, that we, we're still going to have stress points.
And I know it's, there's some, you can't say for sure, but I think what you're telling our customers is that, that they should feel comfortable that we're going to get through the summer without any issues.
Yes, but we're going to end up educating and sharing more information, and we still believe that it's important that conservation has to be practiced actively across the state. And so it won't be that, I saw, I saw an article, one of the ones, I think, that was shared with the board, and someone said, "You don't have to conserve anymore." No, I think we're going to have periods where we're going to have to continue to conserve and all work together to make it through those unusual times when, again, a plant goes down unexpectedly.
So we've had a couple of days that we've, we've had concerns, and those have gone to your satisfaction in terms of, of how we responded as a community?
Yes, sir, absolutely. We, we did, I mean, I think, I think people are a little stressed. I mean, I think the average residential customer kind of expressed some fatigue with, "Why should I do that? Why is that important?" But we still understand, there's still that, that aftermath of Yuri and the stress around that. In general, we're finding businesses are leaning into it with us. So in general, I think we're doing really well, but we're going to have to spend more time still telling everybody, again, it's like voting. People don't think their vote counts, but, but it does. And so the, the continued conservation of everyone is going to continue. We don't have enough capacity for people not to care. And the conversation that we had earlier about the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Plan and continuing to promote that, it does matter. I mean, we have one of the, one of the best in the, in the nation, but the state is doubling down because you also need years to put new generation in the grid, whether it be solar or more peaking units. So it is going to be a collaborative partnership with, with our, with our community about that and still be required to conserve. I was pleased, but, but we can't be tired because the summer's going to be tough, I think.
So on, on, on one of those days, my wife and I, we, we think you know everything about this, but, but we read what you could do, and one of the things was to unplug appliances that you're not using. So we did that. I'm not sure I knew about that before.
Yeah.
So we need to keep getting the word out.
Getting the word out.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
I don't want to go too far down a rabbit hole here, but that brings up a, a question I'm curious about because our experience here in San Antonio for our customers is in some ways dependent on whether or not, you know, folks in Lubbock are conserving their energy, or maybe they're a part of the North Grid, I don't know. But, but essentially, we depend on the behavior of other cities in terms of conservation just as they depend on us. And the incident that happened a couple of weeks ago when ERCOT sent out that notice about planned outages, to what extent does ERCOT work with partner utilities to schedule their planned outages? And, and how is it that they couldn't foresee that?
So a couple of things. I think some of that, that issue we had a little over a week ago was also unplanned outages. I think that was a big driver. They typically, what ERCOT works with the, the participants on is, is really trying not to have planned outages between the, the June to the September timeframe. A couple of years ago, though, we had one of, one of our plants, we had a back-of-core heat issue, and we, we had to bring it down in the middle of summer because we would have caused potentially a catastrophic failure. That meant that you may not be able to get it up at all without it being down for months. And so every once in a while, you'll run into this planned outage component, but it really is, you're trying to stop a catastrophic failure, and that does happen on different units. So I think we had a combination of unplanned and planned outages because something was happening at, at different ones. And the older they get, they're prone oftentimes to those kind of things.
But do they do work with?
Yes, every single participant. And we have to notify when we're, when we're thinking about, when we see a problem with the unit and we think it's going to require that it comes down during the summer, we need to work with them and let them know as soon as possible, and all participants have to do that.
Will they throttle that if there are unplanned outages that are going to butt up against problems with, or, or planned outages?
Will they throttle the?
I mean, will they, I mean, will they work with partner utilities so we don't have planned outages and unplanned outages happening at the same time?
Um, the unplanned outages happen because...
Sure, but if that's happening?
Yeah, they, they look at everything. Yes, sir. They look at everything to see what, what we can do. And again, that's when I think you start to see alerts. And then I think part of Senate Bill 3 that did get approved is about educating the community more about, but conserving all over the state and doing other things like, you know, unplugging appliances, changing your lighting during the day. We've caused a little disruption here at CPS Energy because on certain floors, we've, we've, you know, kind of don't have all the lights on. It has to be even during, you know, in my office, I work in the afternoon with my lights off, but I have, I have a lot of windows, so, you know, those kind of things. We're, we're trying to change our behavior, but the state itself is going to look at some additional things, and we're going to partner with more education to the community. So, I'm sorry, Mr. Dean, just for...
One of the things that's, that's, that, that's different is that we're, that at least I'm getting a lot more text messages. And so is that a program we've implemented in the last few months, or is that, or I have not been on the program before?
No, that we added that program, that dimension since Yuri. We, we thought we would tell people more about when, when we see stresses on the total ERCOT grid and why conservation is more important. So we're trying that as a mechanism. Some, some customers really like it, some don't like it so much. We ultimately have to find different ways to communicate to every type of customer. At the same time, we're increasing our communication to the news outlets and telling them what's happening as well, and they're starting to monitor ERCOT. But that, that series of texts that you're seeing now is new.
So you know me, I don't like a lot of texts, but I've appreciated those.
Okay, good.
And I think that, I, you know, you talked that we, that as a community, we have to care, and I think people do care, but they have to know, they have to be alerted to it, they have to be reminded about it. What can you do to, to be part of this effort? So I think those texts are very valuable in that sense.
Well, I love getting that feedback. Thank you, sir.
So this is back to more of a marketing question. So what I'm understanding is that if ERCOT sends an alert, I think it goes back to brand reputation, right? At this point, the public is very angry with ERCOT, right? And by associate, but when we send out a message and we say ERCOT says reduce, how do we segment those messages? And it should be more like CPS says reduce. I almost feel like by tying our name to them, it actually hurts us versus helping us. Any part of what we need to work on on messaging is that we're responsible for our community. Yes, there's a relationship at a state level, but our responsibility, I think, in communication is really more about what CPS is doing for them, right? So I'm wondering if we should drop ERCOT's name and really just be, "San Antonio citizens, please conserve, and this is why." So those are just, just observation because I read all the threads and I read all the comments on social media, I do all the social listening for myself. So just a suggestion, I, I think that we, we definitely don't want to be our own state in San Antonio, but I think that the more that there's an ownership, perception ownership out that we don't, we don't care, but remove ourselves a little bit from ERCOT's messaging and, and really just cement our messaging that we're here to protect the citizens, it might help just a little bit, just something for consideration.
That is a, a great dimension. We need to improve the way we personalize the messages, to your point. I will say, the, the issue we had about a week ago, CPS was fine, and San Antonio was fine.
Back to, we're still tying ERCOT to ours. So, you know, by, by, again, saying, "We're in a good position, just please conserve, be mindful as a state," right? That's different. We're not tying ourselves to them. And I think that, again, there's still, there's just so much anxiety that anything that mentions them, there's such, you know, negative connotation to them that it hurts all the good work that, you know, that we do. So just, just something to consider.
We'll look at, we'll look at that dimension.
Thank you, all board members. Great questions. Next, we will move to item number eight, a comparison of solar and natural gas. Mr. John Cosmo.
All right, so here we go again, a comparison of solar and natural gas. We'll focus on these particular two generating technologies. Our objective here, you know, every generation technology has benefits and challenges. So we'll focus on solar and gas and compare and contrast these two. And our agenda, we'll, we'll review the guiding pillars that, that guide our decisions. We'll do a side-by-side matchup, the benefits and challenges of the, of the two resources. Talk a bit about, you know, 10-year cost and risk analysis, and then cover key takeaways. Again, our pillars are, you know, and our commitment to our financial stability, you know, guide our decisions, and elements of that, the pillars you'll see in this, in this slide presentation. So here's our side-by-side matchup. If we look on the left hand side at solar, we see no fuel costs. You know, there is a capital investment to be made and also operations and maintenance, you know, that are ongoing, that those type of costs have to be, you know, factored in. It's also a zero emissions resource. It's also a zero emissions resource. You know, it aligns with daytime load reasonably well. We have an attractive fixed price. There's other structures that may escalate, but we tend to go the fixed price. So you have a known cost for that energy over many years, depending on the term. Some of the challenges of solar, as we saw in a previous presentation, it does not fully produce at summer peak. Also, it produces very little at winter peak, so there's some need to compensate for that, some things to offset those benefits. There's also, you know, a large land footprint that has, you know, has some impact. So as we look at the, you know, gas generation technology side, we have an abundant fuel supply from the, you know, hydraulic fracturing technology. We have a pipeline system to take that fuel supply to markets. It's a mature technology, we understand it well. It's controllable. It can be ramped up and down. It is used today to firm up renewables as they vary and as our customer load varies. So very valuable and affordable as an all-in cost, on an all-in cost basis. Now, it does have an emissions footprint, you know, NOx and CO2 being two that we'll focus on on the next page. There is supply risk with gas fuel being more dependent upon, you know, a gas resource, and the price can vary. There's also added risk, as we discussed a little bit earlier, there's, you know, planned, unplanned maintenance. These units will break eventually, they're very complex, but, and then there's higher maintenance costs as you compare this type of resource to solar. On this slide, we have a comparison. What we did here is a 10-year view. We, this is an all-in cost analysis, so all the capital, fixed ONM, et cetera, all the costs are factored in between the two alternatives. And what we have on the solar generation alternative, you know, that's a, what we assumed there was it's, you know, our flex power bundle is fully implemented. We have the 900 megawatts of solar, 50 megawatts of storage, and 500 megawatts of firming capacity included in that alternative and in operation over the next 10 years. On the right-hand side, we have a replacement. We replaced the 900 megawatts of solar and 50 megawatts of storage with equivalent natural gas generation. It ends up being only 500 megawatts of gas generation, and that's to, you know, compensate for the, or to make both equivalent based on solar producing about 50% at that peak, summer peak point in time. So from a summer peak capacity planning basis, these are equivalent resources. We ran this through a hourly simulation of our total generation portfolio. So all the costs are estimated regarding wholesale purchases, sales, fuel burn, things like that. So as we compare them, and look at the 10-year cost line, that's a 10-year present value. The gas generation option being $86 million more expensive over that 10-year period. And that was primarily driven by the capacity payment. It's a, this is assumed to be a purchase power agreement for the gas capacity, you know, combined cycle resource. That capacity payment consists of debt service and fixed ONM. The gas fuel cost is pretty self-explanatory, but those two together pretty much drive that additional cost. The lower cost on the solar generation alternative really driven by that lower fixed cost per unit, that attractive price from solar today. And as we look down at the emissions lines, the CO2 and the NOx emissions, your gas generation will have emissions. Our solar generation is not. As we look at the risk for natural gas fuel supply, it could be supply risk, price risk. This, you know, solar alternative is not impacted by the gas price volatility in the same way as this natural gas alternative that's more dependent upon, you know, gas generation. So there's some elevated risk there on the gas side. The solar side does kind of speak to diversity of resources and kind of helps moderate that risk a bit. There's also an exposure to high market prices risk that we looked at. And, you know, qualitatively, we kind of say that, you know, there is elevated risk with a variable resource during pre-dawn nighttime hours and times of clouding when there's disruptions in solar output. For the gas side, you would have reduced risk as long as the plant is available and the fuel supply is available, you know, at certain hours, there is some risk there, but reduced as compared to solar, you know, over the long term. And summer and winter peak performance, we talked about with solar not producing fully at summer peak and very little during the winter peak. So it would require some sort of storage or firming to supplement that resource, and that's where natural gas, you know, has a bit of a benefit or advantage. You know, it's controllable for long durations, you know, as long as the plant and the fuel supply is available. So this notion of diversified approach is something that we've had for quite some time with our portfolio and benefits our customers by kind of counterbalancing risks and uncertainties. So the key takeaways here from this presentation, you know, we talked about the benefits and challenges. Every generation resource has those trade-offs to consider. Diversification is a reasonable approach to manage risk and, you know, benefit our customers. And, you know, the gas generation and solar, that, this analysis highlights kind of that need for the peak planning during stress peaks and rolling that into our methodology. And so this notion of bundling, resource bundling, can help kind of the two resources counterbalance, you know, the benefits and challenges and kind of keep us on track to a transition to, you know, lower emitting resources and, you know, an affordable, reliable, resilient, you know, environmentally responsible supply stack.
Thank you. We have any questions, comments from board members? If not, thank you for excellent presentation. Appreciate it. Great job in giving us a lot of things to think about. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, and thank you for the feedback. Appreciate it.
At this time, Ms. Ramirez, would you please take us, the board, into executive session?
Yes, sir. At this time, the board is going to recess into an executive session to discuss the matters that have been duly posted under several provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including consultation concerning the attorney-client matters under Section 551.071, security personnel or devices under Section 551.076, to deliberate regarding security audits and devices under Section 551.089, and to deliberate under the Texas Government Code, Section 418.183 Subsection F, about confidential information under the Texas Homeland Security Act. At the conclusion of the executive session, the board will reconvene in open session and continue the meeting. It is 2:38 at this time.
Thank you. At this time, we will proceed to executive session.
As we reconvene in open session, Mr. Mayor, would you bring the board back from executive session?
Yes, sir. It is 4:03 and the board has concluded its executive session. I can confirm that there were no votes taken, no matters were discussed that were not part of the posted agenda. We do have a quorum and all members are present.
Okay, at this time, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Okay, Mr. Kelly made a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? Second by the mayor. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.